Okay, here we are, we're actually live. Yo, what's up? It's your boy DJ L7. I have an old friend back. It's been some time. But ally from Nevada, very key, you know, swing state. A lot of the political activity going on there. The first state to actually carry out an actual overthrow of the establishment Democrats. Very cool. Um, you know, and my man is actually involved with some local politics. You know, that's a very strong, powerful thing right there. Uh, for my viewers who haven't seen you for a while, maybe they're new to you. Why don't you introduce yourself quickly? You can introduce yourself to my, to my audience.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't catch that last. I didn't hear what you said. I didn't quite catch it, sorry. Yeah, no, I am Steven Phillips, grassroots news organization, organization founder, creator of newsforus.world. Um, I created this news organization, which is completely grassroots, no monetary incentivization at all. It's just volunteers, everyday people trying to, you know, get the information out. And so I started covering a lot of these issues, um, like the, you know, the uh, issue and then the, uh, you know, the Ukraine debacle and a couple of other ones that are controversial, to say the least, and exposing them with actual evidence.
I'm still saying on my channel, right? Yeah, we just both got like a copyright strike. Screw YouTube, could suck it, yeah? Okay.
Yeah, we both, we both got a YouTube strike. So we can't upload our posts per week.
Yeah, we're commercial medicines that are marketed to us, not, not always without our consent. Yeah, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, we both got struck recently. We ready to get our heads chopped off any moment on YouTube. Uh, that's what we could say about that. Go ahead.
Sometimes you gotta call it like it is, you know? And sometimes they don't like it and they're gonna try and shut you up, but it don't matter. You just gotta keep on speaking it.
That's right. All right, so um, yeah, you do a lot of work with that. Uh, thanks for your news organization, stuff like that. Now, what brought you on here today? Um, you know, you've caught up with some of the recent work. Thank you for participating into my earlier stuff this morning, talking about like the New York City takeover to find out what's going on.
Yeah, of course. Of course, what you're doing out there and like, it's very similar to, cause I'm like getting involved, you know, and helping people with their, with their campaign, you know, albeit, you know, people that are running for trustee and whatnot. But it's still the same, you know, thing. And ultimately, I truly believe that the one thing that's gonna come down to, that's gonna unite all of us as a species, as a planet, is the kids. I truly believe that. And so that's why it's such, you know, it's, it's not only that, but I was a former CCSD Fed student myself. Um, class of 2001, so I've also experienced the education system in this county in the state. Yep, Clark County School District.
Okay.
Clark County is the county which Las Vegas resides in. So the whole county is, Las Vegas is only one county. That's the difference between here and most places. Most places you got several counties for a city, right? Well, here you got Clark County. And then Northern Nevada, you got Washoe County. So Reno, Carson, all that stuff, sort of through Washoe. But here in Clark County, Southern Nevada, Nassau County, so Clark County School District. And then the corruption we've been diving into and covering and exposing as of late, me and several others, um, is the administrative staff corruption regarding superintendent, some board members, yada, yada, yada. So, big news, big news. Superintendent Jara, so for those of you who have been following this corruption out of Las Vegas, he's also known in Florida, cause he's been, he's done the same thing to districts out there as well, is his history. So, he recently became under investigation by the Department of Education. Well, not him per se, but the board, okay? Which will eventually lead to specific names being addressed or called on that. Which, at which point, his current contract will be null and void and he'll have to resign with no pay, with no payout, with no buyout. But, but if he's not, he had given himself a $400,000 buyout if he resigns early. And that's after giving himself a $75,000 raise, after they fired him and then rehired him because he blackmail them.
Okay.
So that's, that's the kind of level, uh, stuff we're seeing out here. It's racketeering on the administrative level. I'd call it, uh, I pretty much call it a regular break after.
Wait, so let me see if I got this straight. Okay, so the guy was involved in corrupt activity? Then he said he had a clause in his contract where, right, they were about to fire him, but he says, if I leave early, then I get $400,000.
No, this is the most recent, recent contract, but a couple of years ago, board voted to fire him, right? Then he sued the board for hostile work environment, right? That was his claim. And then ended up blackmailing some board members, I believe, we believe, cause it's the only thing that makes any sense, to uh, have a four-three majority on the board for whatever votes he wanted.
Okay, was he convicted of the, uh, of the, uh?
We're in the middle of exposing him and taking him down right now. We've been trying to get rid of him as a community because how bad it's gotten with that. Like, they're not taking care of the kids. They're not, I mean, dude, they're racketeering the Fed department money 100%, cause the Fed kids are getting left in the dust.
Can you give me some more of the, like, specific examples? Like, was there administrative position created for, you know, someone's, a lot of times it's family members? Like here in New York City, the homeless shelter director was actually related to Cuomo's sisters, cousins, something, yeah?
Yeah, no, basically how it works, okay? So, there is a board of trustees, right? Each one represents a different part, a different district in Las Vegas or Clark County. Clark County is divided up into separate districts, right? So we got districts A through, I believe it's, yeah, A through F. Come on, yeah, A through, it might be, yeah, somewhere around there. Anyways, there's like supposed to be seven trustees, right? Each one representing a district. You know, so the, the board, so the superintendent is supposed to be an employee of the board. And the board is supposed to make sure he doesn't overstep his bounds. It's a checks and balances thing, right?
Okay.
But what we have is a, is a right, a situation where the superintendent and big business, i.e. private, privatized billion dollar, you know, privatization of schools, like, um, you know, charter schools, stuff like that. There's the, the money involvement with the corrupt, cause you know, billion dollar companies, investments, we have that angle. So that's what we got going on here through, um, I believe it's the, um, oh man, I can't recall the, the, what it was called, the, uh, the organization, I forget. Um, the National Council of Great City Schools or something like that, I believe, if I remember correctly. And, um, so Ian, you got that, which ties up, it's just, it's a whole bunch of corruption that I don't think any of us, cause it's so involved and so, you know, there's so much of it, so much to get into on it. It's really hard to like break down into just a couple of phrases. But I can, um, get some resources and maybe do a screen share. I have a few clips that I just finished editing from the other, uh, the other day on the seventh, where we had this, uh, groundbreaking win, where the community all banded together and it's told their, where they stood. And we got the board to vote, to, to block the vote on, uh, on him getting, on Jara getting able, being able to resign and taking that 400K. So he didn't get that, it was denied.
You know, actually, you bring up a good point, actually, when you talk about like education reform. Um, and I do have a lot of friends and I personally like, you know, just support charter schools, but charter schools can also be used in abusive ways. It doesn't mean just because a charter school that it's good, oh, no, 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 no.
Right, right, no. But, but no, but the problem we've had out here is privatized, you know, business and privatized companies connected with, you know?
Absolutely, it's a huge concern, yeah.
They're, they're, they're have ties and political donation ties to, you know, conflict of interest, yeah.
Just like the for-profit business industry.
They're not giving, they're not putting it towards the community, to the kids, or they're taking our money. The taxpayers will come believe you right in our faces, 100%. Like, we don't know, like, we're not, like, we're, like, we're stupid or something.
And the administrative vote is often so that they don't have to have any responsibility. There's no transparency, they hide it between other people. They don't need all those jobs right there. They really don't. They're just creating political cover for themselves, giving their fans and their friends and family, machine jobs. Okay, these people will vote as necessary. Um, we, today that was crazy, right? How we saw like the district was only 13 votes on day one. Um, if people don't start to mobilize and realize that there's an open opportunity, things can flip just like that. So we just have to be completely vigilant now. Um, other people may be struggling with their own school boards with corruption going in there. Like, the story may sound familiar to some. What are some of the, you said you guys are in the fight now? What are some of the most effective things that you guys did to really, you know, in this fight?
Oh man, um, well, first we had to have, uh, we had to have some sense of common ground, first of all. That's the most important thing, okay? Cause when, when, when I just kinda got into this, there was different factions, like there was people, it looked like we had both sides of the political spectrum come in, get a gaslight us all on certain issues that we disagreed vehemently on and we were, you know, we're obviously issues that they're all, everybody, they would always agree to disagree on, right? Whereas in the past, we'd be able to sit down and, okay, I can agree to disagree with that, I can respect your view, let's, let's work together, cause we're Americans, right? Well, they took that from us, they pitted us against each other. And what ended up happening is we kinda realized what was going on, to, you know, in not so many words.
Was this about medicating the kids or was this about like the?
Everything, everything, mostly the corruption with the superintendent, because the superintendent basically bought off the, the four members of the board, which gave him a four, 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 a four-three majority every vote, basically. It was a rigged vote, but it was bought, it was paid, it was bought and paid for, is what I'm getting at.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So the problem is that the superintendent is, uh, that's crazy. So after he got, um, these allegations and stuff like that, he actually locked in a better deal with, um, some type of, uh, you know, golden pair.
Well, tried to, yeah. Sure as hell tried to.
Okay, so.
But the few, those, there is a few, there is, okay, so, um, Anna, she's already announced, so I'm just gonna say it. Anna Binder, running for District A, CCSD Board of Trustees, this election cycle. Um, also, uh, founder of unravellingeducation.com, uh, former CCSD Board trustee member, Daniel Ford, has her own thing going on, where she's exposing a lot of this from her own experience now that she's no longer a board member, which is really, really, gotta recommend everybody check that out because it's important. Um, but yeah, so we've all been kinda like, and the community just fucking came together, man. Just read, just after this most recent freaking vote and do, we all banded together and we, we, we blocked it, we blocked it. I, I have the video clip from that, if I can, if you don't mind, I'd love to share that with your audience.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Let me get this up here, it is 27. So yeah, it's, um, it's, it's, I mean, it's a huge, I mean, we're not, it's not 100% win yet because they're still trying to, they voted on the second part. Dude, you'll see, you'll see. I'll, I'll show you the first vote and then, uh, you guys can, I'll explain what happened after that briefly, cause it's, it was a long one.
Colleagues, we have a motion by trustee Guzman, a second by trustee Brooks.
Let me make sure the audio is sharing real quick.
Excellent footage, by the way, I love it. Yeah, the audio is clear, the picture is clear, looks great. Let's get it.
Thank you. It's, uh, my, uh, my, my high-res, uh, 4K camera music right now, actually.
That's great.
Perfect for this kind of broad.
Please cast your vote. Thank you, 2.01.
Sorry, that's the, uh, that's the vote for the.
The resignation of the superintendent.
Sorry, that's the motion, that was the vote for the motion to accept the, uh, or the agenda as presented. Let me fast forward past that, I'm sorry. Real quick, uh, let me get to, there's a couple of public comments I wanna show, specifically Anna's, because it was a good one. Bear with me, folks, there was mine. Oh, so they're not right there, boom. Okay, so this was Anna Binder's comment. This is, I'd actually airing this first live on your show, so I haven't even, I haven't even uploaded it yet to any of the social media. I just literally finished putting it together, cause I had some audio issues with this stream as well, like I did a prior one. So I took, what I did is I pulled the audio from CCSD's EduVision and just merged them. So it took a little bit more time, but I got it done. There we go.
Amanda Simmons. Go ahead, Ms. Binder.
Thank you, Madam President, Anna Binder for the record, Madam President, members of the board. Oh yeah, he's not here again. Um, so I really want to thank my city for hosting this meeting tonight. It is the very appropriate space and venue. Um, there's still an empty chair, I'm really disappointed in that, like you've heard other community members say. I really feel that we deserve to, um, have his presence in the room. And it is a little discerning that we're having this huge discussion, um, without him present. And so, um, I also really wanna give a huge thank you to our community. I know that when this agenda dropped, um, I spend more time in the room with you guys, I think, than anyone in the community. And it was very important to me that other people showed up. Um, I noted 62 pages of written public comment already in board docs, um, before, well, when you guys posted earlier this morning. And I tried to kinda get a visual, most people listening in can't see this, but this room is packed. These are our educators. Everything that you guys do and choose to do affects them. And that rolls right on down to my children, to their children, to our staff, to our bus drivers, to our janitors. And so you guys have to make huge decisions, right? We, we talk about this all the time. I like to have the faith that the ones that you choose to do are the right ones for us, because there has to be a point when we do draw the line in the sand and move forward. And if that's whatever happens today, it is. But please, I, I beg you, when we move forward, that we do it with, we say student success, it, it's a mirage, right? It's a mirage of words, because in five years, we haven't seen the numbers move. And I come to you guys, every meeting, every meeting, and this Friday, so instead of, you know, dealing with things, this Friday, I have to go to a manifestation hearing, because we have a child of color who's deaf and mute, isn't provided an ASL interpreter nor the technology to communicate. And this district had him arrested and put in jail without the means to say a word. And so the community here tonight is saying a lot of words that this kid couldn't even say. And now we have to go figure out how he's not punished for something that this district chose not to do for him. And I'm tired of telling you guys about stuff like this. And that should be a part of everyone's job who works here, right? From the, from the bottom up. All of these kids are all of our responsibility. And we shouldn't have to keep fighting for situations like this when the technology is there and the staff is there to care for them. And my heart is absolutely ripped for this family. Can you imagine being mute and deaf and being arrested and thrown in jail? And you don't even know how to say to call your mother?
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop sharing, I'm gonna get back to the vote, real quick. So if you wanna go ahead and maybe talk about some of the school district issues going on out on your side of the country, on the east coast, that you've heard, anything like related to that? I'm just curious, cause I know it's different in every area, you know, every state, in every county, but there's a lot of similarities that kinda intersect to some degree, some more so than others, you know? But, um, I think we'll give people context and then I'll bring up the vote.
You know, my education fight is actually quite different. Um, right now, they're trying to do something called the Asian American Curriculum. Um, I'm actually quite unhappy with elements of it. They actually removed Bruce Lee and they put in, uh, you know, some, uh, Anna May Wong, right? Yeah?
Yeah, Bruce Lee? Are you kidding me? He's been an icon for freaking decades. No freaking way, that's some bullshit.
They're trying to, they're trying to masculate, they're trying to masculate the Asian American.
Bruce Lee, man!
They also took out, um, yeah, they also replaced, uh, they didn't talk about the Korean LA riots, where actually, um, you know, I think over like half of the, um, losses were incurred in the Korean community, when, uh, what did Korea have to do with Rodney King, right? Doesn't make any sense. So, you know, they were actually used as scapegoats and, uh, you know, it's part of history right there, so they're changing.
But your right, it happens more than people realize, that kinda stuff, you know?
So that's one, one critique. I also was recently at this thing for Claudine Gay, right? The whole higher education thing. So I was arguing, right, I was actually in front of, and you can see the footage of myself protesting, like, why other people, right? Like, people wrongfully incarcerated are not getting helped, but she's getting pushed in front of them because she's rich.
Right.
Not only that, but I was at, it was, um, National Action Network is there, which is Al Sharpton and that. And even though Al Sharpton, right, acknowledged me because he knows I've been working with, with some of his people, right, on some issues.
Right.
The thing is, the press deliberately, you can see for yourself, deleted me from the footage, deleted the only Asian American person there, because they have the little news clip they wanna run to portray it in a certain way. So even though, right, not even saying that, I didn't get a meeting with Al Sharpton afterwards, which he said would happen, but it still hasn't happened yet, right? I've called him out on other things, I was there yelling about Puff Daddy. I, I.
I saw that video where you got him to shake your hand and you were like, that's a bad, that's a bad dude. I, I see what you're doing, dude, I love it, brilliant, it's brilliant.
Yeah, like people are really suffering out here, though, like I'm working with them and.
You're making them, you're forcing them to notice, is what you're doing.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
People need to stop having the blinders on. So, we can't live in bubble, bro.
But that's not really something, that's not something the school board, right? That's something more just like outside of, it's an educational issue, but it's not within.
It's relevant, though, to, to the, the politicization of these issues that's, that's happened.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because people need to understand it, if they need to, if they need, cause I don't think a lot of people realize it, what's going on here.
You know, also, I, I make this, uh, I tell people this, actually, on the train and stuff. I, I know I'm waking out sometimes, I know a lot of people don't talk to me, cause I'm sometimes crazy on the train, I'm sorry about that. Uh, it's a rough life.
You play Super Mario Brothers on the violin? I never seen nobody play violin to Mario Brothers.
Extremely bitter, because I can't make it as an activist, so I gotta do that, I feel like a bum. It breaks me up sometimes.
I, I can imagine.
But the thing is that, uh, so the thing I say is this, right? I say, back in the days, there was a time in this country when this country would not acknowledge the existence of black scientists like Louis Latimer and David the Lightbulb, or George Washington Carver. But after activists got involved, they made sure that black scientists were recognized and acknowledged. So what I tell people is that, like, Asian Americans, you can look this up, right? We've been dominating academics since the seventies, eighties, nineties, two thousands, like 50 years in this country, half a century. We've dominated academics. Can you name an Asian American scientist? Oh, no? You think the education is worth something? It's not. What they're not teaching you is a political education. They teach you to draw a line to make the line go up for the rich guy. They do not teach you how to actually take control of your government and how to make a difference in your own life. They do not teach you how you're being ripped off by the government, how you're being ripped off by the banks, how the mortgage, right? Yeah, you're asked to pay all this money for college, for what? They could, I, I swear to God, it gets me so mad.
Rockefeller or Rothschild that said, I don't want a nation of thinkers, I want a nation of workers.
Yo, people pay thousands, it's disgusting. People paying a couple thousand dollars to watch a YouTube video, I swear to God, professors in college classes, go to the front of class and press play on, yo, how are you getting paid for this? Someone smack them now, I swear to fucking guys, I'm sorry about my language. I can't take it, man.
They're just taking the money.
Yeah, oh, that's a, they're killing our kids and then they're leaving school with like massive debt to, so they could get rich? And what are they doing with the money? They're buying public housing and then they're tax-free jacking up the prices.
Jacking up the prices on the real estate that they buy!
It's bipolar.
It's happening out here too, dude. I, 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 right across the street, I'm right on the edge, on the corner, right? So the street right next to me, lockdown, and then you, on the opposite side, you got freaking houses, right? And so, but pre-pandemic, they were like going for like 120K, 150K, you know, tops. Post, after lockdowns, 350K, 400K, 500K. Motherfuckers came in, bottom up, and freaking jacked up the price. Profiteers, billionaires, people with money and rooted out all little business, small businesses, they all collapsed, all freaking went away because of them, because of what they did during that time.
Yeah, it is overall destructive to society. It's not really good to hollow out these, uh, you know, communities. I've been upstate where Walmarts hollowed things out. At nighttime, it's a crack zone, it's, um, hookers everywhere. The whole society is really falling apart because, you know, you either work for the minimum wage, right? Yeah, or are you basically back on the streets? And it's just, uh, it's turning into a.
It's ridiculous. I was just at the Dollar General down the street from me, getting some, some simple basic items. And, and I was in line and two motherfuckers just walked up out of there with, with a bunch of shit. And one of the, one of the staff went right out and tried, you know, and threw some milk stuff that they had tried to steal on him, on one guy. Then the guy behind me, as he sees that happening and he sees the clerk saying, oh, I'm not, I'm not gonna be no hero. He proceeds to walk out with his shit while I'm paying for mine. I'm like, oh my fucking god.
Yeah, it's a zoo, it's a zoo out here.
I'm like, oh my lord, what have we descended to?
Yeah, so this, also, um, the way that the school, the way that the colleges run the real estate, they have kids staying in dorms, paying exorbitant prices, sometimes 1,000, 1,500, $2,000 a month to live with a roommate in one room, sharing a bathroom. Now they're rolling out this exact plan into the low-income housing. They have the people.
That's what they do.
It's exactly going down, so.
They're trying to push those 15-minute cities, I think, is what it looks like to me. They're trying to gear people towards that, is what it's looking like to me.
Look that up, that's a thing, people, 15-minute cities, this is a thing, it is their plan. And they're also zoning people next to like trash dumps and like Amazon warehouses and stuff. If you're poor, that's where you're gonna be living, with like people that come out of prison, right? Yeah, in a crack epidemic with environmental issues, this is literally happening right now.
I've got the, uh, segment where we got the vote, so I'm ready for it.
Oh yeah, cool, yeah, so, yeah, back to the school board, yeah, so.
Okay, so.
So much corruption around education.
Let me, let me just bring up the, um, no, I'll show that later. Let me show the, the vote and then I'll, I'll stop screen sharing and then I'll get the document so you can see for yourselves what the, what it said in the actual agenda item.
My question, how did these people get onto the school board? Were they elected or are they appointed by the mayor? Or like, how do these people get there?
They're supposed to be elected representatives, they run for their positions in, you know, a general, uh, election every two years, right? For different, I think it's, they, they, a certain district for one, once, one year, and then other ones, every, the other two, you know, two years later, I think it's how it goes. And don't quote me on that, cause I'm not entirely sure, but it's, they're voted in by the people.
Okay.
By the people in their respective districts, basically. It's on the ballot, you, you vote on it whenever it's election season.
Yeah, there are some ways that they trick the system, they have like machines, you know? And a lot of these, honestly, a lot of these positions just go uncontested, so.
You know, it's really interesting, because I remember during, when they had the polls or the results for that last, you know, last, was last year, and there was some odd similarities and some inconsistencies with, that I recognize, that were similar patterns that we'd seen before. Like, for example, November, you know, 20th, you know? I'm not gonna say, they're saying it because I don't wanna get you red flagged, but, um, but like, for example, um, uh, Governor Sisolak was in the lead, according to the polls, it was projected that he was gonna win, right? Then all of a sudden, he drops out, even though he had the lead, next thing we know, Lombardo wins.
Okay.
Similarly, I did a bunch of canvassing for trustee Ford back then for her reelection, but yet the other candidate, Bustamante Adams, I don't, as far as I know, I could be wrong, did not do any. And her last name is the same last name as the head of the Fed department.
Okay.
Or her middle name is, her, her last, her married name is Adams, but her brother. So conflict of interest much? So basically, but the pattern that we've seen just didn't make any sense, you know? Considering what we are, you know? And so that was, for me, red, you know, raised a red flag as well. So that was three different things that I noticed that was just a little bit odd, you know?
Absolutely.
Um, the beginning of a pattern, if you will.
What do you think is, um?
Oh, go ahead.
What do you think is next for this whole situation right here? You think they're gonna?
Well, right now, we're trying to box him into a corner, so he gets caught and fucking has to be held criminally accountable, hopefully, is what we're aiming for. And I'm hoping for several of the others of these that were involved, the couple up here I'm pointing the mouse at. You know, anyways, I'm not gonna, everybody, who they are.
Yeah, this is a highly publicized, there's people in the audience, this is people really care about this.
Big, big, uh, big win for the people. Yeah, well, yeah, they're not even showing public comment. I'm gonna show you what it looks like during public comment on their feed.
It's all public, too, this is crazy.
Right, yeah, check it out, so here's the vote. Hold on.
Also, that deaf-blind situation is an accessibility issue, that's, that might even be a federal violation.
2.01, the resignation of the superintendent, discussion.
But that kid fell under the, fell under the, uh, Fed, and he, he was classified as a Fed kid, like IEP, Special, you know, Independent Education Program, right? That's what they did to a Fed kid, because they're racketeering that money, they're not using it on the kids. That's how bad it was, is what she was getting at in her public comment.
... possible action on approval, the conditional resignation of acceptance for the third-party agreement to the employment agreement between the CC, the Board of Trustees and Dr. Esu Hara. Colleagues, we have a motion on the floor to approve, accept item 2.01. Motion by trustee Williams, a second by trustee Brooks. Members, please cast your vote. Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee.
Was trustee Williams holding up one of the green signs?
Trustee Williams is not their president, but she's on the intercom, she's one of the trustees.
Okay, so why are they cheering for her?
They're not cheering for her. They're cheering because we, we blocked the vote, we blocked them from passing the vote, even though they had a four-three majority.
All right.
You know, you know, money under the table.
Oh, thanks for catching my drift, yeah, okay, I wasn't really sure.
Okay.
All right.
That's what I was getting, there, there, there were a few, yeah, that's how they were able to get away with it.
I thought they were cheering that person's name, my bad, okay.
No, 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 she cast her vote and we, we blocked it. It basically, the people are showing up and expressing their views and saying, we're not okay with this. We were able to, to affect, change that freaking worked in our favor. Now, that's, that's the first step. We still have a long way to go, but that's a huge win for our community, considering that we've been dealing with this nonstop for five years with no result.
The people that voted, the people that voted like yes, right? Yeah, to keep the, um, the guy, like, do they have direct ties? Like, do they have ties that are known? Like, did they used to work together?
Yeah, absolutely, well, there's a, there's so, the conflicts of entering, interest are, are so obvious. And so, I saw, you know, it's so almost, it's almost an absurdity that we're even seeing it so brazenly, because it's almost as if we're watching a freaking, you know, what would be like, um, you know, like a spoof comedy movie, like, where you know how they made scary movies? you know, like a spoof comedy movie, like where you know how they made scary movies from Scream and shit, like something like that. Like, that's how absurd and obvious it is. You know, it's like, it's unbelievable that they would even have the gall to think that they could do this and get away with it, that we wouldn't notice.
You know, they probably do get away with a lot of stuff, because I bet usually people don't show up like they did that night. Like, I see the audiences packed, so. You know, usually a lot of these types of things are very sparsely attended, and they can get away with a lot of crap. So, you know, they might think this might just all blow over. You know, they're actually, they see all the crowd, and they're like, oh, well, they came out tonight, but, you know, a month from now, we'll see where they're at. They probably go away.
That's basically, here's, here's, here's where the role challenge comes in. There's a few dedicated, there's a few of us that are on this, you know, in this fight, like dedicated for the right, you know, for the actual reasons that we want, we want, and aren't going to settle for anything less than criminal accountability, period.
Well, you guys want.
Because of how, because of what they've done. And so, as such, those of us that are like that cannot be bought. And as such, we may be somewhat limited in number, but we're the ones organizing and unifying the rest of everybody else, basically. But we're having to do it.
They're making victims of deaf-blind kids. Yeah, I think people are gonna start standing up, you know, like this.
That's one aspect of it, but there's so many more layers even, too, just believe me. I recommend your viewers check out unravelingeducation.com and also their YouTube channel. Daniel Ford, really good, gives synopsis and background on what actually happened since she served her term. And so I think that's a great introduction for people really want to get the inside scoop on that. That's the best route for them to go, because that's where they're, they're gonna get the gold information, you know, the golden nuggets.
No, it's so busy, but actually, there's, there's actually some new AI that's inside the editing programs that will make captions available for people that are actually deaf.
So, yeah, that's a new feature I've been seeing in my, my stuff, too.
Yeah, I gotta get that hooked up. I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit behind. I've been on a tear. But I'm very happy to reconnect with you and other people during this highly political.
Yeah, dude, absolutely, man. It's been all over a year since I think we were on a podcast or a show together.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right, this is a school board, so, what other connections does the school board have? Like, are they connected to city council in some ways, or?
All the way up to, to, you know, the commissioner, there, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot to it. I can't, I don't want to misclose something, but trust me, it's, it goes all the way up to the governors, you know, it's, you know, there's, there's the Las Vegas Economic Alliance, which is kind of like a local WEF, if you will, and if you ask me. You know, it's, 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 it's a private corporation for profit, so. But those, these are organizations that are, you know, obviously, they're posing at the front as NGOs, stuff like that. And, and, you know, they're running a racket, basically. A massive one, a massive one, across the country.
Yeah.
And there's other counties in the, in this, you know, and not just like here in Nevada, but in other states, too, that have had exactly the same problem, and how, and their superintendents are graduated and went to the same school in training as the one did here. It's but that umbrella or that academy, quote unquote, seems to be one of the connections with a lot of this, but it's a very, it's the same pattern, same playbook. I mean, it's clear as day when you, when you look at the data.
What about?
They are witness, at these meetings, every one of us that goes there, it's like, holy shit, are they really doing this?
Well, I think charter schools could play a role. I'm actually much more excited about homeschooling.
Yeah, I like the whole aspect. I think that's a good avenue for people that should, they should have the option to choose that. If they so choose, that's, that's, you know, everybody has the right to choose their, you can't like, you can't enforce one people's set, one set of people's rights while infringing on another's at the same time. It doesn't work that, you know?
Yeah.
About mutual respect.
Yeah, and for charter schools, just because it's different doesn't mean they're better. They could be just the same thing, or maybe even worse. It's possible, right?
And for profitization of those charter schools, that is, should be our concern.
You have to, yeah, you have to carefully look at each, there, public school could work or not work. Charter schools could work or not work. It depends on the implementation. That's really key, so. People, sometimes people that want to support one side or the other, they really, they have something to gain from that side winning.
Absolutely.
It's not necessarily, they don't care about the other things going on. They don't care, and that's just, that's not good for the overall health of it, so. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this to the attention. Unfortunately, CFAC, the Asian American, you know, one thing that I also want to say, like a lot of, like, just being Asian American, and when you talk about education policy, you'll see that a lot of times they will actually have the immigrants. People from Asia, I'm not against people from Asia, but they don't have Asian Americans who've been through the educational system here. Because the thing is that the immigrants believe strongly in the school system, which actually helps them to sell a product. So it fits commercial marketing of, buy my product, it'll fix your problems. But Asian Americans were.
More easily susceptible to that way of thinking. That's what they want, though. Privatize these, you know, these core profit, that's exactly what they want. It makes perfect sense.
And they'll find, if they do find an Asian American eventually, because right now you can see that they don't. This is a clear warning sign, something's going on, so these criticisms will mean that eventually they will address this, and they'll find an Asian to say what they want, right? To say that the school system is good, who's Asian American, but this person will be successful in a certain way. They will be soft, they will not be non-confrontational, they will not raise serious issues going on, and you will be recognizing them. So do not believe them just because they filled in a little checkmark on a box.
The same way that happened with our superintendent out here, albeit a different nationality, but nonetheless, same thing, exact same playbook.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I really appreciate that. So, all right, cool. All right, so any other, you know, I'm pretty much ready to call it. It's been a super long day for me, but.
Yeah, me too.
For other people that are doing the, this work with the, the school boards and stuff, right?
Yeah.
Any other particular recommendations, just from your, this whole experience of getting involved with the school board and?
Yeah, absolutely. First, I want to say I couldn't be more proud to be involved in, in that fight with, with the Clark County School District of corruption that's going on. I am humbled, and I feel honored to be able to be a part of this change, and it's this piece of, it's history, we're making history right now, basically. And I know that for a fact in my bones, I can feel it. So I'm grateful for that first and foremost. And I just wanted to say that. And secondly, go check out binderfornevada.com if you're, if you're in Nevada, check that out. If you're in Clark County specifically, she's running for Clark County School District, a trustee position for District Day. And so I would advocate to everybody, if you want to go make a donation, if you like what we're doing, you want to support our cause, her cause, you know, she's part, I consider her part of my team, because I'm working with her on other stuff, ground level stuff, you know?
Yeah, I would love to actually. Because the way.
Go ahead.
The way, because the way the Up24 platform is this year, you could even technically run multiple shows. So if you want to have specifically about school board or whatever, try to bring other candidates to talk on that, on the specific issue.
Let me see that. Let me send a filter, see if they'd be interested in coming on.
Hopefully, yeah, we'll see. So you could.
Because they'd be able to tell you, give you the best context, especially from their own perspective, because they were there, you know, they've been fighting it a little bit longer than I, kind of came in a little bit late in the game, but.
So my man over here may have a special, you know, a very, I think, highly anticipated presidential debate, and also like other candidates debate on the jab. I think, right, yeah, probably pushing on rumble, and then also this other one, maybe even education, we'll see, right? Yeah, with the school boards and bring other people into the mix on that, right? Yeah, bring your specialty and expertise in this field, and these other people that you talk about. I'm very excited to, I would love to actually have this lady for interview on my channel, right? She could actually get involved with it, so please encourage her to be part of this Up24 program, and I'd love to interview her. Also, before, before you go, the next one, sorry, just got to say this, too. I didn't have a presidential candidate you're working with, very interesting. Can you get him to also participate with the, with the, with the, I'll encourage.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Well, I'll let him know, because we're trying to, anyways, right now, as it is, so this is, this is the time to do it.
This is great, man, yeah. But is he from your area? Is he from Nevada?
No, no, he is from, from Illinois, I think Marion, if I'm.
How'd you guys link up together?
Okay, so me and Angie, or AKA Dottie, I went up to Jefferson City, or went up to Missouri, flew to Missouri in August of twenty twenty-two, right? So maybe about six months before we initially, you know, did that first show with you. And, but anyways, we had, there was a rally in Jefferson City up there. We were intending on going to covering it, right? But we got thrown through a loop or some sort of time freaking funnel, I don't know, dude, but we lost a bunch of time, and we ended up backtracking, and we missed it. Just, we just barely caught the tail end of it. I don't know, it was weird because it was over, I mean, the area we were at was close to where the Ozarks, I mean, we literally went through the Ozarks. I remember the path. I was like, dude, that's from the show. But we were right there. We were literally, we rode that route when we were going to Jefferson City. It was the weirdest thing, but we missed it, but the after-party over at the pizza place that everybody was at, where we ended up running into this guy, Dennis Andrew Ball, we, and just kind of took off there, and we decided, well, because we were already thinking along the lines of networking, you know, alt media, you know, grassroots kind of deal, me, what me and Angie were thinking, but we were both actually working, so we had actually independently come up with concepts, and then just realized that each other was doing the same thing, and we're like, well, let's team up, let's fucking, let's fucking do this shit. So we did. So that was where we ran into him. We decided we're going to give him like a thirty-minute segment, turned into an hour, so we do an hour-long show every week while he's running, while he's campaigning for.
I love the work with that. I see you've done quite a bit, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm quite excited to meet him, yeah. Let's see what else. Yeah, actually, you know what? Just so, I'm gonna make a plug for myself just for a moment, yeah. If you have donations, please hit your boy up. News for World, doing quality work. Also, myself, I have an opportunity to maybe go to the border with Susan Boshalachaki. I don't have the, the means to really just take a break for a week, right? Yeah, but with funding, it might be possible. That would be so fun, but I don't know. If she has a RV, that would be crazy, go on the road. That's, that sounds like a sick, I want to see that footage. If you go in the Ozarks, did you make, did you record something, put that on the channel?
I, you know, if I, I have it somewhere on my, my hard drive. I backed it up a while, like when I first came home from that trip.
Oh, you gotta see that. You gotta upload that. I want to see that.
I never, I could, I got like seven different hard drives here. I don't know which one is on right now.
Oh, thank God, okay.
I have to find it, bro. I have to go back in my photos and see where I started at, before I could, I couldn't, I couldn't just bring it up, because it could be anywhere. It's a lot of them.
Want to see it at night? Like, I was just got, like, all excited. I was like, what is this? Okay, all right, so.
I actually got some photos of the trip, but I'll bring them up on the next time, next time we're on the air, because I want to have them queued up, so we're not having dead air, you know?
Okay, so there's one more thing you want to say. I'm sorry, I kind of broke your whole spiel right there, but you were like finishing up.
Oh, I was gonna say, don't forget to check out unravelingeducation.com. That's Daniel Ford's website and relates to her podcast, so she's filling in the beans on all the corruption that went down the last few years. And from an insider's perspective, I'm exactly what went down. So you're gonna get the real scoop from her, really. She's the foundation right there. She's the one that hadn't, hadn't discharged, and all the, majority of the credit goes to her, because if it hadn't been for her speaking out and asking the hard questions when she was trustee, and then fighting as hard as she is now with what she's doing now with the podcast, I don't think we would have been able to rally the community like we have.
Appreciate that so much, all right? Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, cool.
Thank you.